I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, January 8, 2018, and the time is 7:06 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were just a couple of items in the table file.
Actually, there was only one item in the table file, and that was the actual hard copy of the enrollment report for January.
Okay, excellent. So, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, December 11, 2017. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? A second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, December 11, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Dr. Hillman, announcements and recognitions.
Yes, I have two announcements this evening, and both recognitions. Over the weekend, I had a chance to attend the Minnesota YMCA Youth and Government Model Assembly Program, and approximately 1,500 students participate in this government simulation over four days. Statewide officials, the statewide officials, the students themselves, were actually elected last year to govern over this year's assembly. Students participate in many ways. Many of them serve as representatives and senators. In fact, I actually got to observe the student representatives and the student centers doing their work in the actual Minnesota Capitol, House, and Senate chambers. It was very exciting to see those students debating the floor. I might even say a little bit more politely than some -- oh, I didn't mean to say that out loud. They actually also serve as members of media teams, and chiefs of staff, and the Supreme Court. I got to watch the Supreme Court do some debating. We had 32 Northfield students in grades 8 through 12 participated, and junior Anna Weber serves on the statewide steering committee. And, you know, we often talk about authentic and meaningful learning experiences that allow students to apply their classroom learning. We've talked about that a lot. We've talked about how do we try to explain those kinds of experiences, you know, to people whose experience in school was in a classroom, in a desk, straightforward, you know, for a long time. And this is just one of those examples of how kids can take that classroom learning, in fact, we're going to hear about this from our charter school friends tonight as well, to take that classroom learning and they apply it in a novel situation. And I was so moved by the experience, I wrote a blog post about it on my blog. I encourage you to check that out. But really, just a great program, top to bottom, and there's a number of parallels to others, things that we do within the district with the kind of learning students got to experience at the Youth and Government Program. So, just a great program. The second recognition this evening is that Northfield High School Art Department, once again with some accolades, they just found out today, this is hot off the press, that we have 13 Gold Key Winning Works of Art. This is with seven different Northfield High School artists, and there are six Silver Key Winning Works of Art from three different Northfield High School artists. And this is coming from the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards of the Minnesota Chapter. It's a nationally renowned organization that has been supporting the growth of young artists and acknowledging high-quality work through scholarships for decades. There were over 3,000 submissions from around Minnesota. Northfield High School had 19 acknowledged winning works of art. The names of the students will actually be released relatively soon. They weren't able to publish those this evening, but I'm told you can check the Northfield news in the coming weeks for greater details. And the Gold Key Winning Art will be on display from January 30th to February 17th at the University of Minnesota's Regis Art Building with an award ceremony on February 17th at the Wiseman Art Museum. So, again, I think we all know that we have world-class art department, not only at Northfield High School, but throughout the system, and we're really proud when our students are recognized for their work in that area. So, those are your announcements and recognitions for this evening.
Excellent, thank you. Really exciting stuff. So, board members, is there anything you'd like to add? Okay. All right. So, thank you. We'll move on for our first item for discussion, and we welcome tonight Simon Tyler, Director of Prairie Creek Community School, and Barb Morrison, Director of Arcadia Charter School. We apologize, there's a couple of pieces on your, at your table, the data sheet for Prairie Creek, and brochures from Arcadia. We will have the data sheet for Arcadia emailed after the meeting tonight to board members. It was, actually, it was part of the, our online packet, it just didn't get hard copies. So, if you'll make reference to your packet that was emailed last week, you will have that data sheet for Arcadia. So, we apologize for that. Simon, welcome.
Welcome, yeah. And thank you for inviting us to your board meeting again. Dr. Hillman and board members, we really appreciate this opportunity to stop by annually and share a little bit of what's happening in our programs. So, thank you for your time. I think as Director of Arcadia and Prairie Creek, this is now maybe my 10th time before your board, and quite wisely, I think, Dr. Hillman has figured out that giving a little time constraint is a good thing. So, we will endeavor to keep our presentation around the 20-minute mark for the two programs, with plenty of time for questions at the end. So, I talked with Barb earlier, I think that means Prairie Creek has 18 minutes, and Arcadia will fit theirs into the last two, so it should work very nicely. We're going to follow a format that we've used for the past few visits to you. Barb and I are going to share a little bit of data, it's in our data sheet, the Prairie Creek data that's in front of you, but also continue our focus on shining a light on some of the more innovative aspects of our programs. Tonight's presentation will give you a highlight of play at Prairie Creek and the social curriculum at Arcadia. To start with, oh, I'd just like to refresh you a little bit on the mission at Prairie Creek. These are the four pillars of our school mission. Prairie Creek's now been in existence almost 35 years, and this is the original mission which has remained unchanged throughout our school history. We've ridden the waves of many educational reform initiatives and change in education, and we seek to stay anchored to these four pillars of our mission. They help us stay true to our core values while we continue to create and look for the best learning experience for our children. A little piece on the data sheet in front of you, I appreciate you haven't had a lot of time to review that, and I'm not going to talk a lot about data tonight in my presentation in the interest of time. There is some summary data on your sheet, though, as you can see, we're accountable to World's Best Workforce Goals, just like the school district is, although as our own district, we do have some leeway to create those goals that fit best with our K-5 program. There's some very basic MCA proficiency data on there, as you are authorized within our contractual goals. We're obligated to show you that our students are progressing academically, and I am happy to report that our math and reading scores in the 2017 MCA proficiency test were above the state average, and also above the comparison schools that we set forth in our annual report, if you want to find more data in there. You've also got a little graph on there, which just gives you a very basic visual of our financial status. We take our financial responsibility and sustainability very seriously as a small public school. It's absolutely essential that we maintain a fund balance that helps us ride some of the vagaries of state and federal funding and other things that might come our way. We have a very gradual decline in our fund balance, which meets with our fund balance goal. We have a fund balance policy that ensures that three years out, we're doing forecasted planning to have a fund balance of no less than 25% of our Fund I balance, and you can see the graph that demonstrates that. For the rest of this presentation, I'd like to highlight some of the exciting initiatives and happenings that are going on in our school, which I touched upon on that data sheet. First of all, our arts residency cycle. I think it was perhaps at our presentation last year that we really zoomed in on the arts in a more extensive way, but I did want to give your board just a little highlight of the last few years of arts residencies. The arts is such a core value in progressive education. They're a place where our children can engage in creative learning, risk-taking, learn the lifelong skills of performance and presentation, and they also provide a way for us to bring professional artists to our children, to our small building out in Castle Rock, to give the children an experience of the arts world that's a little different. This year's arts focus is called Beyond Words. It's a residency that focuses in on poetry and book illustration. It's supported by a really generous Minnesota State Arts Board grant of $9,000, and our fantastic board, and I have to say, because the board chair's sitting right behind me, Ben Miller here, very generously supports within our budgeting of the arts, and we do commit several thousand dollars of our general education budget to supplement these grants. This year, that's enabled us to have a poet in residence in the building, and we actually launched this this morning. We had a very exciting morning of poetry, and it'd be remiss of me not to mention that Northfield's poet laureate and Northfield's board member, Rob Hardy, stopped by to see us launch the poetry residency, and I think he's going to work with our children a little bit as well. So, thank you, Rob, for joining us with that. As part of the residency, we'll also have a focus on book illustration with several field trips to the Minnesota Book Arts Center. So, we're very excited. So important for a small program like ours to engage in careful and thoughtful strategic planning. Our board takes this responsibility very seriously. We're right now at the, in year four of the current strategic plan cycle. That plan has focused in on three core areas, our education planning, outreach, and community engagement, and sustainability. In this year four of that planning, we're actually starting already to look forward to where we want to go next strategically. Just to give you a little sense of that work, back in August, we began that process with a board retreat where we looked back over the past three years, evaluated things we've been successful with, wanted to celebrate, and started to think about new opportunities. We followed that up with a board faculty retreat in November, where faculty and board members sat down together, reviewed mission, centered ourselves, particularly in the progressive education piece of our work, and began a consensus process for where we might want to move forward. This spring, our board will lead the creation of a steering committee, which will set about launching us on a new strategic plan cycle that will engage the community in next steps for our program. Also on your data sheet is just a little bit referencing the work we've been doing in regard to outreach. As a small progressive education school, and as particular as a small public progressive education school, we find it invaluable and essential, really, that we need to reach out and connect with other progressive educators. There's a national progressive education movement, the PAN stands for Progressive Education Network. They hold a national conference, once every two years. We've sent six of our staff to that conference. We've reached out to local schools here in Minnesota, and we have a commitment to hosting student teachers to help share the work that we do with the next generation of teachers. Really excitingly, this year, we have three student teachers in our building, and that's something we've not had for a while, from programs at Augsburg, at Bemidji State University, and an online program out in Arizona. The 2016 Imagine Conference, this was part of our strategic work through the last cycle. We wanted to host a one-day opportunity to engage with other educators in our building. Dr. Hillman brought a lot of his leadership team, I know, out to part of that conference day. We really enjoyed the opportunity to share our practices with other educators and learn with others, so much so that we've decided to make this a conference we're going to host once every two years, and the second conference is just beginning to enter the planning process now for next fall. So, a little shout-out early on, and advertisement early on, that you'll be very welcome to join us on November 15, 2018, for the second Imagine Conference. Just to wrap up my piece of this presentation, this is a slide that I've put before you, before, it just gives you a few bullets that hit upon some of the key elements of what makes our program perhaps a little different to a traditional model. And in prior presentations to you, we've zoomed in on some of these and how they look in our school. I'd need several hours, a lot more than 20 minutes, to dig deep into any of these with you, but just wanted to give you a little five-minute insight into one aspect of our program we've not really talked about before, and that is play. Play at Prairie Creek, ironically, is something we take very seriously. It's a core value for us. It's an element of our program which is really being part of a progressive education practice, a core value of progressive education for many years, and really is coming back as a conversation in educational circles, as we learn more about how the brain develops and how children benefit from play in different ways within schools. So, to give you a little break from my voice and bring one of the teachers up to microphone, I've invited Michelle Martin, who's a very experienced Prairie Creek educator, to talk to you a little bit about what play looks like at Prairie Creek. Thanks, Michelle.
So, thank you very much for your interest in our program tonight. As Simon said, play is a very hot topic in education today, but it is a very long-lived topic in progressive education, and even out at Prairie Creek, it's been a central part of our work. And in fact, Lynda Crawford, who is the founder of the Responsive Classroom Method that's used in many, many classrooms, she was once our director out at Prairie Creek. And when she was our director, they worked together to formulate the idea of the first six weeks being central to the development of a classroom community and a school community, and a big part of that was recess, and something called guided recess. And we continue that work today. She took it with her into guided, into responsive classroom. We take it still very seriously at Prairie Creek, and our first six weeks are very, very sacred. We take them really seriously, and we are outside with the students, playing with them, teaching them games, engaging with them in play. For those first six weeks, they don't have open recess, we have something called guided recess. And in that recess is multi-age, and the teachers are there with the children. Initially, each classroom works together, but then they begin to expand out to meet their other peer level, age level peers, and then the older students begin to play with the younger students. That structure of multi-age play continues throughout the year, and the teachers are always out at recess. And we believe that that's really important because we get to watch what students are doing. It's part of how we bring emergent curriculum into the classroom. Just the other day, my class, or I was called over because they found something in the woods, which is always a little scary, and this time it was an unidentifiable bird part, but it turns out with enough research, you can figure out that it was actually a pheasant gizzard, which we left outside of our window and which had disappeared several days later, which gave us another opportunity to talk about things. So, by being out there with the students, not only are we there to help them solve problems, and we're out there to observe them, but we also are able to bring elements into our classroom teaching. Our woods, if you talk to alumni of Prairie Creek, one of the first things they'll mention are the woods. Do you still have forts? Do you still have goldens? And goldens are our currency out in the woods, which I had nothing to do with, started way back 20 years ago, when students would glean corn from the fields around Prairie Creek and bring it in and trade the corn for sticks. Unfortunately, goldens are also eaten by squirrels, so it causes a fair amount of conflict. And that's part of the fun and the work of play in the woods as well, because while you'll see in that picture down below, there's a lot of cooperation out in the woods, a lot of logs that need moving, there's also a lot of conflict. And so, it gives children a very authentic way to practice the skills that they learn in our social curriculum and to work through conflict, because we now know that that's very important, that kids learn how to disagree, how to manage those feelings. And so, we're out there to help them do that. Risk-taking is also a big part of learning, and the woods is full of experiments, whether it's businesses, we have many, many failed businesses, and some successful ones. I have a lot of recipes for fort air fresheners, if you're interested, and also levers and inclined planes that are used to move big rocks around. There's often musical instruments that are being built, and bands being formed and disbanded. And then amusement park rides are also usually built, and there's lots of things like that going on all the time. So, students are taking what they've learned in the classroom, in the science classrooms, and bringing it in, or music and that kind of thing. So, there's a real symbiotic relationship between our classrooms and the woods. I mentioned that the first six weeks gives us a chance to really teach how to play with students. Our fourth and fifth graders, as part of their work, they take on some special leadership. They learn peer mediation skills. They also learn how to lead games and solve conflicts out on the field in competitive play. We have a group of students that become the stewards of the woods, and they teach how to play in the woods and how to build forts. And then we also have a group called the Bird Watchers, and that's about a third of our fourth and fifth graders take on, for really the whole year, the job of watching out for our youngers. So, they learn, and if you want their handbook, they have a field guide to all the different types of kids they might see out on the playground, how to help the shy kid, how to help the lonely kid, how to help the kid who's angry during a tag game. And so, they're, they usually illustrate these. These illustrations are not nearly as charming as theirs are, but that's part of their work is to become leaders, and that's part of our social and emotional skill work, not unlike your web program in the middle school. Play, of course, doesn't stop at the doors at Prairie Creek. We bring it into our classrooms as well. All of our teachers are always looking for times to bring play into our work with the students, because we know it not only is very engaging, but it also creates very deep and meaningful learning. We know that risk-taking and failure are central to success in the 21st century. We've heard it again and again as part of the growth mindset, and it, of course, is very central to play as well, and that's why it's a critical component of the learning that we do out at Prairie Creek. Our teachers are always watching, as I said, for opportunities for play. On the left, you can see a class, it's a little hard to make out, but they are on a big patch of ice that developed in our field one day. We had had melting and refreezing, and this great big patch of smooth ice appeared, and the students were out as part of another activity, but they began to kind of like get interested in the ice. So, we cut a couple of thermometers out, and we were testing the temperatures of the ice in different places, and then they were trying to figure out how to create vehicles that would move across the ice, and we had some great conversations about friction and how to reduce friction, and they used some lashing skills to lash some bamboo poles to underneath those pools, so that they could raise them up on sleds and have less friction. So, as a teacher, we're always watching for these chances. You don't know that the parking lot's going to freeze, that wasn't the parking lot, but the field next to the parking lot is going to freeze over. You have to be open to that, and you have to have provisions for it. So, that's something that our board has really done a great job of helping us to provision to have those things ready to go when we need them or when the opportunity arises. The students at the right were participating in a role play about colonial America and pre-revolutionary America, and those students each had roles that they were inhabiting. There, they're making some apple cider, but back in the classroom, they were using role play to really understand the different perspectives of the Revolutionary War. So, some of them were Tories, some of them were revolutionaries, and a good portion of them were kind of neutral and trying to just keep out of trouble. And so, when they did things like read a transcript of the Boston Massacre, they suddenly felt how very differently different people could see the same historical event. And so, that kind of empathy and that kind of perspective-taking, something that's really important, as we know, in conflict and working through conflict in groups, is something that they're learning and doing as part of their social studies curriculum through role play. One of our kindergarten teachers set up an entire Ojibwe village last year, in which children were making things to trade with each other. They learned about Ojibwe lifestyles, and they told stories to each other, and she wove a lot of literacy into that. So, that role play is just a very, very powerful way that play can ignite our students' interest in things, but also help them take perspectives. So, with that, I will close. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Before we move on to the Arcadia presentation, is there any specific questions regarding Prairie Creek maybe we could address now, or would you, board members, would have a chance following both presentations as well, but if there's anything that's top of mind right now you'd like to ask? Okay. Then let's move forward with the Arcadia presentation with Barb Morrison here, and then we'll take questions again at the end.
Hello, thank you for having us. And thank you, Michelle and Simon. Michelle and I spent a lot of time coordinating our outfits tonight. So, Arcadia Charter School, tonight's presentation will include World's Best Workforce Data, some data to show you that we are a viable school, functioning well, finance update, a little bit about our social security, our social curriculum, and other innovative initiatives that we're taking part in. This slide, I'm going to read it to you, well, I'm not going to read it to you, I'll just tell you, we had three goals as part of our World's Best Workforce. One was to increase our reading scores on the MCAs, to increase the percentage of students who met or exceeded proficiency, increase that number by 5%. And in science, to increase the percentage of students achieving proficiency by 2% and in math by 2%. So, here's, here are the results, and I just had to show you this. If you look at that top line, that top line is reading. We didn't increase it by 5%, we increased it by 9.5%. We went from 72.1% proficient to 81.6% proficient, and that's a steady rise. Our math, we increased by 5.1% from 53.8% proficient to 58.9% proficient. We're very happy with that. But it's science that kind of blows me away, and that's the grayish-colored one. We increased our proficient students in science by 15%. We went from 47.5% last year to 62.5% this year. So, we're pretty pleased with that result. Now, this slide is from MDE, and the reason I included it is to show you what a large population of special education students we have. This is not unusual in charter schools. In fact, I was at a board meeting at Minnesota Association of Charter Schools, M.A.N.C. today, and we were talking about trying to deal with the large influx of special ed students who really appreciate that smaller class size and more personal impact. But the point is that with 40, almost 43% of our population being special needs, we still increased all our scores across the time. I think that's pretty impressive. This, we will, I know it's hard to see, but this shows since 2012 through 2017, if you look over at the right side, it's grade by grade enrollment, and under total is the total number of kids who have been enrolled during that school year, and then the average daily membership on the right. So, we are making good progress and keeping our cap of 126, but we're doing well with that. Our finances, this is the end of the year at our audit, we have for the last five years been pretty good. You will notice, if you look carefully, as I did when I typed this up, our revenue for this last year was $1,984,803, but our expenditures was more than our revenue. Our fund balance still went up. There were some extra costs in transition between myself and the previous director, so we expected some of that, and that had to cut into our fund balance a little bit. But in spite of that, our fund balance managed to be going up by a healthy amount. I'm not going to do the math right now. Okay, now for the fun stuff. We continue to do a lot of arts and residencies programs. Last year, we brought in the Stuart Pimsleur Dance Theater from the cities, and we do have an active dance program. Vocal Essence Witness Program, which is, you're familiar with Vocal Essence as a singing program, but they also do social consciousness, and they spend a lot of time with the kids, and then the kids go up and attend a concert by Vocal Essence. We had an artist come in and do printmaking, and we had a residency, an online residency that's really interesting, with the Cole Center for Dance in the cities. That's interesting. I don't know why it looks like that, but digitized. Our social curriculum takes off from where Lynda Crawford started her program with the Responsive Classroom. As you move up into the middle school, her program becomes designed for living, design, developmental designs. I'm sorry, it's getting late, I guess. Developmental Designs is a pretty special program that looks at social curriculum, social learning. We believe that how staff and students interact with each other determines the success of our community. So, we use developmental designs in a similar way, in that the first few weeks of school, especially in the middle school, are spent developing a social contract especially in the middle school, are spent developing a social contract, doing a lot of work in a circle. Those little pixels are actually people sitting in a circle. I hope the rest is a little better. Every morning starts with that circle. That includes a setting for the day, sharing, social games, discussions of concerns. And you can imagine in a middle school, there are always lots of concerns to be discussed. The high school does not do the circle every day, but the high school is starting to use restorative practices, which is restorative justice, and that's the next step. So the students are actually being trained now to run their own circles. And in this way, the research shows that these students, if you wanna know what's going on and what the problems are in your school, you need to ask the students. They know, they know what's making them unhappy, and they know what needs to be changed. So we are teaching them how to use the talking piece and the whole circle process. And when something comes up, it may be a disciplinary problem. I may ask the student who is in my office, would you be willing to take this to the circle? And if that student is willing to take it to the circle, then the other students talk with the student, and they come up with the consequence, and they discuss why it happened and the whole deal. If they don't, if they don't wanna do it, we don't do it. But hopefully, we're just in the process of starting this, and we're, we're pretty excited about it. Also, at the beginning of the year, we do a social contract, and the social contract is created by the students for their advisory. Remember, we each have, we have four advisories, two high school and two middle school. And the social contract may be as complicated as, or as normal as, we each treat each other with respect and dignity. And it may be, no one should take anything off anyone's desk without their permission. That's always a big one. And no bottle flipping, that's a big one. So these contracts are displayed in the classroom all year long, and the staff does one too, which is in the staff lounge. So we can at any time go, you know, makes a big difference. We've been working this year on building partnerships. A lot of these partnerships have already been talked about in previous years, I'm sure. We are partnering with the Y. We also had six students who went to Y, and it's just a fabulous program. We have family nights at the Y that, where they close down the whole Y for the evening, and it's just Arcadia kids up there being crazy with their families, and that's a lot of fun. And we're working with the Montfayed right now, so that we actually have a partnership to do instruction, so they're learning how to use the machines. And the Y people will come over and do some yoga and wellness activities with the kids. So we're, we're very interested in continuing that. We work a lot with the Northfield Arts Guild, and we, of course, host YPT, the Young People's Theater, in the summer. The Senior Center just closed down doing a play, The Merchant of Menace, in our great room over Christmas break. I don't know how many of you got to see that. Curbside Composting, some of you may do this. This is a company that was started with an Arcadia alum, Cliff Martin. And he needed to have a host for the dumpster. There's a better way of saying that. But the compost dumpster now sits in our parking lot, and DSI has agreed to pick up their composting. So Cliff's group drops off the composting, and then DSI picks it up. And we have all gone to compostable trays and food and everything in the school now. So that's, that's a great plus. We've partnered with Eagles and the VFW. We have some families who are connected with them, and they, we are doing an omelet breakfast coming up. You'll, you may get invited. I hope you'll come. That's through the Eagles, the VFW, Worth of the Sound, Pancake Breakfast. Both of those events are fundraisers for our May terms, which can get kind of pricey. So we try to, we're starting earlier this year and try to get enough money to support those. We've had some local churches come to us, and they're interested in volunteering, so we have no problem putting them to work. So that's been a really surprising and very gratifying for both of us. And Arts for Martin, coming up January 12th. I hope you can come. This is not a fundraiser. This is purely something that the community of Arcadia is giving back to the community of Northfield. Includes Prairie Creek Orchestra, Laura Baker Choir, Arts for Martin singers. I don't know what else. There's some poetry involved, and so it's quite an event. And you may have read about it in the paper. One of our students, Alden Christopher O'Hark, does the backdrop spinning, and they're really remarkable. Just real quickly, we do a lot of experiential learning. I keep hearing about charter schools who are boasting that they do experiential learning. I think both Prairie Creek and Arcadia does this as part of our educational programming. The top picture is one of, I think, three trips to the Guthrie that the different school groups took this year. And the bottom is from, that's from Woodbridge. But we try to get the kids out and active and doing, doing things all the time. In fact, this summer, we're going to Europe. I'm excited. So we actually have a group of 12 kids, and our social studies teacher and myself, and we're going to go from London down to Rome this summer. So we hope this becomes the start of a regular thing. It's very exciting. Again, we do Poetry Out Loud. This is a national program. Anika Cheever went to Nationals last year in the spring. The kids, these are the kids who did it this year. We had two people advance now to regionals, I think. It is Anika Cheever and Belloc Camery. And then if they do well, they go on to Nationals. Poetry Out Loud is a recitation, so they have to select a poem and then dig deep, figure out what it's all about, and actually perform that for us. They do it for three judges, and one of them is Rob Hardy. We thank you. And it's quite an experience for them, for all of us. These are five goals I'm gonna go through real quickly. The staff has been working, this is faculty and staff, on, we started working on a strategic plan. It developed into five goals for the year. And these are the five goals. Differentiation. So by the end of the school year, every student would be successful in meeting their three individualized goals. These are goals that they set with their advisor before the beginning of the school year, their very first conference. And then we check on it by quarters. Innovation in projects, now that may not look like the greatest project, but that's her first project. She's only a sixth grader. And it was a really cool project about trees. So we expect every student to complete four projects per year, and those should be, we're trying, we're developing rubrics for those so that they demonstrate innovation and depth. And that includes presentations. Behavioral expectations, we expect to be fewer behavior incidents, although we don't really have that many behavior incidents, I have to tell you. This is an example of the restorative practices circle, where the students are actually involved in setting the consequences. Resources, money, and capital expenses. I laugh because this is our Thanksgiving, which is our big fundraiser, and the kids put on a performance, and parents give money, and it's a special thing. You might notice those two kids in front, I got to be in this skit. The kids put on skits. The theme for the event was called Night at the Movies. So those are nights at the movies. Yeah. Pretty fun. Core course inspiration, so we're working to bring our core courses because, remember, we're a blended program between traditional classwork and projects. And by the end of this year, each teacher will have a clearly developed course description as a result of collaboration across disciplines. What we're doing is trying to make those courses as rigorous, and yet rigorous and challenging, but yet at the same time based on project, based on our philosophy. Well, for last, since 2014 at least, we have been recognized as a high-quality charter school. That's a designation by MDE that it, what it really mean, it's based on an algorithm that looks at academic growth, financial responsibility, and overall excellence. And it means that you are now eligible to expand or to replicate. We don't wanna do either one of those things. So at the board meeting today, I suggested at the M.A.C. board, what else could they, can they give us something more than just that? So we're thinking about it. MDE always says they're thinking about how they can spread the news. So we wanna thank you. This is a sign, our new sign that a parent made for us, and thank you for your support and for listening tonight. Questions?
Excellent, thank you. Two really excellent presentations. So board members, questions, comments? Ellen?
So I actually had a question that applied to both, so that's why I didn't feel like I could.
Sure.
So I really appreciate both these presentations, and thank you, Michelle Martin, for, I know you've come in over a year, Simon's roped you in, but it really helps to sort of characterize what's happening in both buildings to get that sense. And what I'm curious about is, I know Simon's been active in Northfield Promise, and one of the things that we've sort of struggled with is thinking about the, is the cradle of the career, the career piece, and how early to ignite students' passion and start thinking about. And what really struck me when I was looking through the PowerPoints and then hearing the presentations was with the play, I think you even used those sort of words, Michelle, about sort of igniting them. And then, and then at Arcadia, sort of the goals, so I'm wondering if either one of you would feel comfortable giving your observations of how you think these models have helped students to think about that, you know, as they, you know, obviously, you want to do a lot of exploring, so, you know, in fifth grade, it's not like you're thinking about your career, but, but getting students more prepared earlier. And if either one of you could give us a little idea of that.
Yeah, it fits well with our program because we're a middle school and a high school. So the process at the middle school for the projects, the four projects, if they do one per quarter, is thematic, much like Prairie Creek. So a theme might be Renaissance, and then you come up with a project about that. By the eighth grade, we want them to have an end-of-the-year project. So their eighth-grade project should reflect something that they're exploring, some kind of an interest, we're thinking career, but we're not gonna say that. Once they get into high school, that becomes more of a conversation, and we start talking about transitions, and we talk about finance and budgeting and insurance, and they actually find that very interesting. Then they have a junior project. The junior project is an exploration of, for what they wanna do after college. So however they want to handle that, but it's a lot of support by staff and advisors, and they, they may have a, in fact, they're encouraged to have a mentor in that area. And then their senior project is the big one, and the senior project is presented, and they do work with a mentor during that time. And that's hopefully going to be moving them in that direction.
Yeah, thank you for your question, Ellen. And I've had the good fortune to work with the Northfield Promise, really as a representative of the charter schools and small schools in the area. So I've thought a lot about this. One core value I take away from the time with the folks on the Council of Champions who guide the Northfield Promise is the importance of relationships. And I think relationships and relationship-based learning is the core of our program out at Prairie Creek is something we really value and look for in our programming. So one of our World's Best Workforce Goals, we have to have a college and career readiness goal, which is sort of an interesting challenge for a program that finishes in fifth grade. But what we decided to do to meet that requirement was set just an expectation that all fifth graders 100% will complete an Honors Project at the end of their time at Prairie Creek. And one of the key aspects of the Honors Project is the mentoring piece, that there's a relationship formed between the student, the teacher, the parents, and an outside mentor to guide a several-month-long process. And that really ties in so closely to one of the world's, sorry, one of the Northfield Promise values around connecting students with important adults in their community. I think there's many other examples of how we do that at Prairie Creek, but that's one that jumps to mind to me, which is really specific to a Northfield Promise goal.
Thank you. Excellent. Rob?
Okay, I've got one very small, specific question for Simon, and then one for both of you. Seems like Prairie Creek has a lot of traditions, like the Goldens and things. Today, when I was there, as you were leaving the all-school gathering in the gym, the children all were singing a song as they left. And I'm just wondering, like, when the entire school knows a song like that, what, in what context does it learn, and who chooses the song? I mean, things like that. So in that, in that instance, I was just curious, because everybody knew it.
Okay, can I bring my colleague up, who's rather more musically inclined than I am, to help with that one, Rob?
He's not being modest.
No.
That's true.
Singing and singing together has been a central part of the Prairie Creek life for a long time, I know, for many, many years. And so our all-school gatherings, we get together every Friday, and different teachers bring songs to those gatherings. Some get sung once or twice, and some, like the one you heard today, Molly brought that to us, actually, at the beginning of this year, and it's become a favorite. So, you know, raising our voices together is just something that really builds community. And not all of the songs are serious. There are a lot of very, very silly songs as well.
And my other question, I was just looking at the Minnesota statute, the charter school law from 1991, and it talks about the purpose of charter schools, and primary purpose of charter schools is to improve all pupil learning and all student achievement. It seems like you're doing that. Increase learning opportunities for all pupils, you're doing that. Encourage use of different innovative teaching methods, you're doing that. Create new professional opportunities for teachers, including the opportunity to be responsible for the learning program at the school site, you're doing that. I'm just wondering, the two other ones are measure learning outcomes and create different and innovative forms of measuring outcomes, and establish new forms of accountability for schools. It seems like there's some problem with those two things that are in the law. So are there ways in which you are able to measure, you know, come up with new accountability measures within the constraints of what the state requires of you? Go ahead.
Yeah, the way, one of the most important things that we do is looking at these projects. And we've designed a rubric for the projects that's fairly exhaustive. It, it's not an easy process to do a project. When my son started there in the first year of its operation, it was pretty much the Wild West, to be honest. But it's evolved, I'm happy to say. And you need your essential questions and your benchmarks, and you're kind of scored all along the way on a specific rubric, like the kids and the parents have. And that goes into a transcript that my good friend Angelique from the admissions office at St. Olaf called me one day and said, this is unreadable. You have to come up with a different transcript. So we are, we're working with Mark from the counseling office here and Angelique, and we're trying to produce a transcript that colleges will be able to easily understand, but which also has this innovative project-based rubric built into it. And it's quite a challenge, but, so I think that's, does that answer your question?
Yeah, Barb touched upon a couple of things we've done, such as creating rubrics to support our Honors Project process. Rob, it's a really terrific question, and I think we spend a lot of time out at Prairie Creek, talking about what is authentic assessment, and what does that alternative assessment look like? You know, we do astue traditional report cards and grades, and we do really try and de-emphasize the importance of a standardized test from a philosophical perspective, while, as you can see, providing the data we're required to provide as a public school and being attentive to that. So for us, one big piece of that is trying to create an assessment system that speaks to the whole child, the child as an academic learner, as a social, emotional child, as a friend, as a growing individual in the process of learning. So for our, twice a year, our teachers provide written narratives to the parents, which is essentially a two-page story of the whole child. In fact, they're working on them right now in preparation for the upcoming conferences. Takes a tremendous amount of time. It's not data that we can neatly put into a graph for you or for a chart, but what it does is authentically sort of measure that child's progress as a, as a young human being and all the complexity with which they present themselves. And that's really what we keep coming back to. I think we get stuck when that kind of measurement is, where we're requested to put that in something that can be compared to someone else or something else, because really, it doesn't lend itself to that. So we have that kind of assessment in tandem with the more, you know, traditional assessment models in our school. I think the other thing we're doing is also something which happens in all good schools, traditional, progressive, we're in We're increasingly trying to empower our teachers to utilize formative assessment models, where they can actually create data which is more diagnostic and informs the instruction. For example, just last week, in our most recent teacher-led professional development, Kathy, one of our teachers, led a two-hour session on science formative assessments. She walked us through, a variety of assessments can be used in our thematic setting, to learn what the child's, you know, base knowledge is, and their starting point around big science concepts, and then how that can be used to cycle back into the lesson and theme planning. And again, I don't think that's something that isn't happening in all good schools, but it's something we certainly prefer to invest more time in than perhaps some of the outcome measures at the end of the year.
Thanks.
Amy. Can I just, just a sentence to that. It is really a challenge, because we want to do these innovative things, and we're not going to back down. We're looking for, we use three, four different student data systems. We use N-Grade for grading, we use Project Foundry to track our projects and how that goes, we use JMC, same way you use Skyward, and then, and then, of course, the special education data points. So I would give anything if we could find one. I'm trying to put some people on it, but that's part of, that's part of the challenge. And we have a song, too. Should I sing it? Our song, here's our song. "We are the world, you know we're Arctic, and yes, we know the only word that rhymes with that is Star Trek." And then I don't know the rest. They sing it every year. Amy?
So, you may not know that my daughter went to Prairie Creek for kindergarten through fifth grade, and had a very positive experience. And people might think that Prairie Creek community, that community words means the local area, but I would say it really means the community of the school, because there's so much community there in so many ways that's created, and a lot of it's created by Michelle and her singing, so she was a little, she didn't go into detail, but she does a lot of singing, and, and even today, I'm sure my daughter and her friends would ask to sing with her. But I just wanted to say that, also, my daughter just, within the last month or so, was talking about the forts outside of Prairie Creek, so it's a lasting memory. I am very excited about your MCA proficiency results. I know a lot of work went into that, for both schools. And I know you try to downplay it, but it is sort of one measurement we have. My question is, with the results, are they based on a certain grade level, or are they the average of all the students, or, that was just a little unclear.
Well, perhaps I can speak to the Prairie Creek, because that's the data you have in front of you, that is third through fifth grade. So we're a very small cell size in each grade, 30 students in third, 30 in fourth, 30 in fifth, and we combine that data mostly because it gives a more, the trend data makes more sense over time. We can have very sharp changes in grade to grade when we're only looking at 30 students, and each student essentially represents three percentage points, if that makes sense. It also helps us when we are looking at the data to break out things like special education and frame reduced, because that cell size shows up in a three-grade span, but not in a single-grade span. So it's more useful for us to assemble it that way.
So it's an aggregate. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can speak briefly.
The math and the reading are grades seventh and eighth, I believe, and the science is grade 11. So the science is really based on those students who have already taken biology, but perhaps not chemistry or, yeah.
Thank you.
The MCA patterns that you're seeing there, as a public school, public charter school, they take the exact same MCA assessments as our traditional public schools, so it'd be the exact same, you know, the exact same grade groupings that we have. But as Simon said, you know, you do have to be careful about grouping those small, or having those individual small cell sizes, because there can be very large swings from year to year, and I think that's really smart to group it for the purposes of reporting at the aggregate.
No.
One of your goals is that all students ready for kindergarten, be academically behaved, be ready for kindergarten for both schools. How, how do you influence, how do you measure that?
Well, I'll be straightforward with you, now, that's a challenging goal for us, because we're a K through, K through five program. And I think this is, I think the world's best workforce legislation was probably envisioned more around a traditional school district, which was tracking students from pre-K through to graduation and college. The way we approached that goal, and a lot of conversation with the state around it as well, was to look at the opportunities we do have to connect with incoming students. We typically know by about April who's coming into our program. So we set our goals around families attending in April orientation, and then engaging in two surveys. One, a parent survey, which was generated by our kindergarten teachers, and one survey that we passed on to the, the teachers at the preschools, which those students were coming from. And we're small enough, with 30 incoming kindergarteners, that we can sort of do that at the micro level and find those teachers and get that information. And then in collaboration with Erin and Northfield Promise's wonderful kindergarten readiness program, and we really appreciated being invited into these conversations with the district kindergarten teachers, we've utilized the booklet, which was collaboratively created, which gives those families opportunities to work with their children over the summer in preparation for coming into Prairie Creek. Our follow-up piece for that is for the teachers to have a 30-minute interview with the child during the week before school starts, and during that time for myself to have time to talk with the parents about our program. So although it was initially very awkward for us to think about entry and our influence on pre-K, it's actually generated some creative thinking, where we really feel like we're learning a lot about the children who come into our school before they come. Now, are 75% of them ready? I mean, that's a contractual goal, that we'll have a handle on that number by 2021, Matt, I think. And this was the first year where we piloted doing math and reading assessments in the week before school started, which was designed by our kindergarten teachers. And we just used that as a pilot this year, but I think with that data, with the survey information, as we move certainly through this contractual period, we'll probably be able to come up with a meaningful data number on how we're progressing towards that 75%. I'd be really reluctant to put a percentage on it right now, because again, it's a sort of emerging data and process for us. We're also philosophically really interested in the question of what readiness for kindergarten means, because so much learning how to be a child happens in kindergarten. And so, we're very reflective about that, and how we influence the children once they come into our building is, is a lot of our thinking. That was a very long-winded answer to your question, did it help?
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent questions. Board members, other questions? Barb?
I was just thinking about, I mean, one of the things that people will say about the choice that we have in Northfield between the traditional schools and the charter schools is that people have different learning styles, and different children need different things. Recently, I talked to a parent and then a former student at Prairie Creek, who both said, "My child was very, thrives on structure, and really needs structure." And when they went to Prairie Creek, they found out that they had to, sometimes they had to do things in different ways, and, and that it was actually really helpful to not have the structure. And then getting back to the middle school or the high school here, getting back to that structure, they had more flexibility. So I'm just wondering if, if, you know, that conventional wisdom that you need to go with your learning style holds up in your view, or whether you think there's, you know, value in working against your style for a while?
Well, you know, we get, I was probably more than Prairie Creek, maybe not. We, how shall I answer this? We, two, two of my three sons went to Prairie Creek. Third one would have, but he was too old, they hadn't opened it yet. And my oldest son went through the Northfield High School and graduated in 1998, and was, had a wonderful experience. And I was teaching here, and I had a wonderful experience. And so you think you know all about your kids then, and then the next one comes around, you think, "I got this." And of course, they're entirely different, you don't have it at all. So he started at Prairie Creek, but in about third or fourth grade, he needed something more, it wasn't working out as well, he was actually causing some behavioral difficulties. So we put him in the, back in, in the Northfield Public Schools, and he did great. It was just what I needed. The youngest one came along, went from Prairie Creek straight through Arcadia, and thank God for Prairie Creek and Arcadia, because he, he really did blossom. But every time he tried to come back to the high school, his anxieties got the best of him, and he had to pull back. I think I've been in this long enough to say that he, I would never predict what, what a child is going to do. I just can't. I, I talk with the parents, you make the best bench you can, but we try very hard, Lisa Malika, our social worker, and I try very hard when we're talking to families, to, to explain the program and, and make sure that we're doing the right thing for the child. Because it's just hard to tell. Now, I, I gave a student a right, I didn't really give him a ride. I talked to him about why I couldn't give him a ride, one of our sophomores, and the brilliant kid, and is planning on going to MIT, I have no doubt he'll get in, he's doing neural networking, coding, and all kinds of things. And he said to me, "You know, it seems to me that Arcadia is kind of like for the really, really smart, and the really, really challenged, and there aren't too many people in between." And I thought it was such an interesting, it's not true, but, I mean, we have the same wide range, but it spoke to how comfortable he felt there. And we have, we have the ability to change on a dime, we are well acquainted with our kids and with their families, and we, we can support them. And there are kids who really thrive there, and like I say, there are kids who really thrive at the high school, why wouldn't they? That's great. Does that?
I could talk about it, but in the interest of time, I don't know if you're, this is really fun, by the way. Your, your questions are amazing, but I also don't.
This is why I told you to leave.
I know, I know. Your questions are phenomenal, but I know you have other things to do.
No, that's fine.
Are you sure?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I know, Michelle would just be jumping at the bit to get at this one, but.
No.
From my perspective, I, I think we perhaps push back a little bit at this idea that there's a Prairie Creek kid, or there's a kid who belongs in a more traditional model, and that's one thing we so appreciate about the collaborative relationship with the district as our authorizer, is that we, we blur some of those lines. We're talking about all of the same things, the importance of social-emotional, the importance of growth in students academically and as community members, and relationally, it's not that, that different. So, so Rob, I, I think we, we're very careful at Prairie Creek to make sure that our authentic cent, or assessment, the child-centered piece, sort of pushes us a little bit through some of those simplistic ideas of what sort of child can be successful, and rather think all children can be successful, which is really the Northfield Promise emphasis, it's the emphasis of every good school system. We have some constructs that help us with that. We, we use the 16 habits of mind a lot at Prairie Creek, because while in one habit you might be pushing a child more inclined towards, a more structured way towards risk-taking as a habit, or finding awe and wonder, or finding humor, there's other habits which support the opposite end of those children who need to strive for accuracy and precision in their work, or develop the capacity to work with other students in a collaborative setting. So, looking at the habits of the mind of the child, always towards that big end goal of nurturing the lifelong learner, rather than a particular style of learner. Michelle, if I didn't sort of represent you, the teachers, why don't we jump in? Because she's the one that matters, not me, she's in the, she's in the classroom every day. Yeah, thanks.
Other questions or comments? Dr. Hill?
This is one of my favorite evenings of the year, and one of my other favorite days is when I get to come to visit your schools, which I'll be doing very soon. We've got Prairie Creek queued up in late February, so I've not been there in the winter before, I'm excited about that, and of course, Arcadia just a little bit later. But, you know, as you think about it, the Prairie Creek folks and the Arcadia folks tonight have talked about the partnership and the collaboration that the district has as their authorizer, and actually, I think it's, it's more than a partnership. You know, it is really symbiotic in a lot of ways. You know, Simon, a couple of times, has said how we brought our leadership team to the Imagine Conference, and I really appreciate you saying that, but to me, it's a no-brainer, because we have some things that we can support our charter schools on, and there are things that we can learn from our charter schools. And if you go back to the origination of charter schools, they were designed to be innovative areas that were to inform traditional public school practice. And I think that one thing I would just caution everybody who's watching this, or when you read about the national narrative right now on charter schools, like many other things, do not believe the national narrative, look at local conditions, because this relationship is exactly what the people who authored the bill in 1991 had in mind. And we are so proud to be your authorizer. We were happy to finally get the sweat behind us and be able to become your authorizer for another five years. We're proud to celebrate the completion of a new contract with Arcadia, and before you know it, we'll be redoing yours, Simon. But this is a special relationship, and I challenge you to find another place in the country that has this kind of relationship. And it's because we work together, we understand the important role that the traditional public school plays, we understand the very important role that charter schools play. The site visits are phenomenal, and I look forward to those. If anybody ever wants to go on a site visit with me, just let me know, I'll be happy to take you along. It is really a, there are so many things that they do well, and you know what, it just came full circle for me tonight, because it makes total sense that Lynda Crawford, as a responsive classroom junkie, or groupie, would be, have run there, because I'm sure that we'll, I'll ask you to sing some of the special responsive classroom songs that we taught in my elementary school, where I was principal and used the responsive classroom techniques. So, thank you, you know, to Prairie Creek. Ben is the chair of Prairie Creek, thank you for your work and, and for the efforts that you and the board make. Thank you, Barb, you know, coming as the interim director last year and leading Arcadia to some obviously very exciting improvements on all fronts, not just the MCA. I'm very excited to see that as well, while maintaining that spirit of the arts and those things. People say that can't be done, people say it's got to be an or. And I haven't said, "No, we don't talk about ors, we talk about ands. We can do this and that," and you are living proof of that. So, we sincerely appreciate your work, we're proud to be your authorizer, and we look forward to decades more of our special relationship. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. That was a wonderful conclusion, and, and as a board, you know, we, we did Dr. Hillman's comments. We are really, look forward to this presentation as well, and we are really, really proud of the relationship that we have, we have developed. And it's all in the best interest of Northfield students, so it's, it's really good. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you for your speaking.
So, we will move on. Our next item for discussion, we have Director of Teaching and Learning, Mary Grace Hansen, is here to provide an update on the process and timeline for implementation of the new district's reading curriculum. So, welcome, Mary.
Good evening. That's a hard act to follow. I was wishing that with the weather today, I had been out there in the woods, building forts, so, and I will promise not to sing, so we'll do that for you. Sarah?
All righty, thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Well, thank you for your time this evening, and I'm here to provide an update about a very exciting project that we're doing, a curriculum adoption, and our, for our students and our teachers in the area of literacy. And the most important function of our school district is to prepare our students for their future, and one of the most important aspects of that preparation is to make sure they are literate. And this is accomplished partly through a comprehensive literacy curriculum, and by providing a lot of opportunities for student success. The goal is to have every student reading at grade level, and writing, and speaking, and communicating at a high level. And the elementary schools are in the process of adopting a literacy curriculum to help us meet that goal. This process is directly aligned to our strategic plan that states that we will deliver success and educational excellence for every student in our district and our community. And it also fulfills- And it also fulfills our commitment to our ongoing near-term and long-term priorities of robust core instruction and support for all college and career paths. The next two graphs are just to provide, jog your memory from the World's Best Workforce Report in November. And as we reported, our results on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments in the Reading Assessment, our scores have been flat or declining over the past five years. And we have not reached the level that we expect nor that we want for our students. And the MCA results also mirror what other data inform us, such as our MAP tests and our DIBBLES assessments. So we have highly educated and experienced teachers, and of course, our students are great. So we need to examine what it is that we're teaching and the curriculum materials we're using. The curriculum in place that we have right now is literacy by design, and it was adopted in 2007. And this was not updated to reflect the standards change in the English Language Arts that occurred in 2012. And therefore, to put the strategic plan into action, to respond to the data, and to update curriculum materials, we are moving through the process of adopting a new literacy This work has been helped and aided along by a grant from the Minnesota Department of Education in the multi-tiered systems of support. And that grant examines the fidelity of implementation of Tier 1, which is core instruction, Tier 2, our intervention process, and Tier 3, specialized and individualized instruction. And we, in Northfield, were lucky, or worked hard, to receive one of three statewide grants to participate in this examination. And we began our process in 2016-17, when we took a close look at four areas of implementation of core instruction: teams, implementation, resources, and evaluation. As a result of examining the data from that fidelity tool, we now have literacy teams at each school and a district literacy team. And these teams then began the in-depth examination of our resources and our implementation of those resources, as well as the evaluation of how we were doing with that. The elementary district literacy team met throughout the year last year to discuss our beliefs and practices about literacy instruction. And this culminated in two days in June, when the team examined three curricular options in depth. We examined benchmark literacy, Next Gen from Pearson product, and collaborative classroom. We used a rubric to rate all three curricula in the areas of building knowledge, foundational skills, high-quality text, and evidence-based discussion and writing. We had presentations from representatives from each of the three companies, and then we spent two hours, two to three hours in teams, using the rubric to evaluate those curricula. And collaborative classroom, which I will get into in more depth a little later, rose to the top in every area. Northfield Promise provided support to compile the data for us, so that was very helpful. And as an aside, this year, we're looking at Tier 2, and our results are much higher for the interventions and the intervention process, which wasn't totally surprising, because that's essentially where we started five years ago, was with the Response to Intervention RTI process. And so we received much higher marks in, in the Tier 2 than we did in the Tier 1. Our timeline for implementation, I included in your board packet, the expanded timeline, and this is just to highlight some of the important dates. The materials have been ordered, arrived, delivered to the classroom teachers. And they were kind enough to deliver them to each school. And we only had a problem at one school with some of the materials being crushed under the weight, but we've gotten those replaced. We're spending the next eight months in training and staff development, and we will be ready to roll in September of 2018 with the full collaborative classroom. As part of our literacy program, we are implementing online web-based literacy curriculum this year. We spent the summer reviewing 13 different programs and decided on three for implementation this past fall of 2017. Imagine Learning is used in grades 1 and 2. Lexia Core 5 is used in grades 3 and 4, and Reading Plus is used in grades 5 through 7. Lexia and Reading Plus have been reviewed by What Works Clearing House and received their highest ratings. Imagine Learning is too new to have been reviewed by them at this point, but we, the middle school has used their product in math for the last two years, and we've been very, very pleased with that. So we were willing to take the, the risk and go with that for grades 1 and 2. Excuse me. Three products were chosen because it gives us a chance to implement them, see which ones work, which ones the students find most interesting, which ones give the best data to teachers and parents. And then we also have the flexibility to move students from one program to another. They aren't bound by those grade levels. And we've moved some 6th and 7th graders to Lexia or Reading Plus, depending on their And we have two-year contracts with most of these firms, so that we can do this over a two-year period, and gathered implementation data and results to examine whether or not we want to continue with this. And we need to see how they will fit with collaborative classroom. As I said, collaborative classroom was the, the literacy program that was chosen. It has three components. Being a reader is in grades kindergarten through second, and that's building foundational skills and has a, a strong phonetic base. Making meaning is in grades kindergarten through grade 5, and being a writer is also in kindergarten through grade 5. Social-emotional components are embedded in the curriculum, and that will support and supplement our second step curriculum that we adopted this year in social-emotional realm. We have 12 sets of readers for grades K through 2, and children are placed in those for their guided reading time. The collaborative classroom was a little weak in guided reading books for grades 3 through 5, so those grade-level teachers are working with us to choose supplemental books for their guided reading. And we've gone with Pioneer Valley in grade 3, and grade 4 and 5 will be working on that this spring, as they get more into the collaborative classroom materials. One of the underlying components of collaborative classroom, you can see across the bottom, is their continuous professional learning. And as the district elementary literacy team met last year, professional development and training was what their top core belief about what was needed for our literacy program. And so that was one of the reasons collaborative classroom rose to the top, was their belief in professional development. And one of their philosophical approaches is professional development is best when it is developed through local capacity. So they will be working with us to develop local literacy leaders, so that we can sustain this. Because the first year of implementation, we get all of this wonderful training, and then down the road, how do we sustain that and continue it? So part of that is to develop local leaders in, in classroom teachers, and also in their online components, they have a series of videos, like being a reader has, I'm sorry, making, being a writer has like an hour and a half worth of videos, but they're developed in shorter chunks. So if you just need to hear about this piece, you can go to that video and learn about that. And you can watch it one time or 10 times, however much you need. Plus, PLC groups, our professional learning communities at a grade level, can decide to narrow in on one piece and watch it together, discuss it, watch it again as they go throughout the year. So a little bit more about the professional learning. Every classroom teacher has opened an account on the Learning Hub. That's the web-based site for collaborative classroom. And on January 10th, this Wednesday, we have an hour-long live webinar with collaborative classroom to take us through all of the aspects of the Learning Hub, what to find, where to answer questions about that, so the teachers can get started on this. We are also working with Edina, and in February, they adopted collaborative classroom two years ago, so they will be having a collaborative classroom learning summit. And we will be sending a teacher from each grade level, the literacy coaches, our assessment coordinator, and myself to go see what they're doing. And as I've been talking with Edina, they have been very envious of our process. They handed their teachers their materials on the August day as they were walking into their first training. And they said, you have no idea what a gift this is, to have these eight months to be looking at the materials and being, getting ready to go. So we're, we're excited by that. And then in June, we'll have two days, the 11th and 12th, Monday and Tuesday, after school gets out, depending on snow days, which we're hoping. And all of the elementary classroom teachers will be working with collaborative classroom trainers. And they will, we will also be targeting some teachers to help lead that training that we will repeat then on August 20th and 21st for our new teachers, or anyone who is unable to attend in June. So we need to say a thank you to Northfield Promise. They have been very supportive of our efforts in literacy. And the Read Well by Third Grade Committee has done some very innovative and wonderful things that have helped support our efforts in the terms of reading. The Move 5 initiative is also one thing that we are working on with our third graders to move five in each classroom. So that is a very brief update on the literacy adoption of collaborative classroom for the three elementary schools. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary. Questions? Amy?
I love how organized you are with this whole process, so good work on that.
Thank you.
And a good presentation. My question is, what is exciting about collaborative classroom? Why was it chosen? Why are the teachers excited about it?
Certainly. Good question. Part of it was the professional, embedded professional development and the building of local capacity, so we could sustain that professional development. The other piece is, all of the three components, being a reader, being a writer, and making meaning, are supported by anchor texts of authentic children's literature. And I think the teachers are so excited to receive these materials, because there are beautiful books, authentic children's literature with each of those. I have read all of them, believe it or not. I've spent a lot of time, and it has been fascinating. And like in the being the writer for second grade, as I was reading the trade books, the literature that comes with it, I'm going, hmm, I'm sensing a theme here. And it's all about letters and letter writing. Many of the books were about that. And so there's a whole unit in being a writer on how to write a letter. And you could tell that the authentic literature correlated very nicely with the lessons. So I think that's the most exciting part.
So the authentic literature is, would all be books that we've heard of?
A lot of them are, yes. Yes, they're authentic.
But better than just little essays that people, that the kids are reading?
Right. Oh, no, no. These are, these you could go to the library and check out. In making, being a reader in grades kindergarten through grade 2, the first five sets are written with a phonetic theme in mind. For example, the short a sound. Nan is a fan. Sam is, you know, so it's, it's not necessarily authentic literature. It's written with a controlled vocabulary and a controlled skill. After that, it's all authentic literature.
And what sort of professional development is provided?
Okay, that's, obviously, this is really exciting for me, so I could talk here all night for you. We do have the, the webinar on this Wednesday with collaborative classroom to talk about the Learning Hub. On February 19th, we spend half a day with two trainers, who are going to get us into the materials. You know, this is your teacher's manual. This is where you'll find this. This is how we approach reading. And then the two days in June, we will divide into K2 and 3-5 grade levels, and they will go through planning lessons, how to use the materials, how to organize the time, how to organize the materials. Then next fall, and this is a very exciting part, so I'm glad you asked, they will send a trainer to us for several days, and we will meet by grade levels. They will plan a lesson with the trainer, go through all the steps. The trainer will go into the classroom and teach it while the grade-level teachers observe, and then they will have a chance to debrief that. They found it's a little less threatening to have the trainers do the teaching, rather than ask for volunteer. So that's going to be a very exciting follow-up. They'll come in October, November, we'll have to kind of schedule it around conference time, to figure out how we can do that. But I think that's a very exciting component of their professional development.
Mary, could you also talk about the QR codes?
Oh, certainly. All of the materials are available online, all of the teacher's manuals, in the Learning Hub. And as you go through, if you're using your paper copy of your teacher's manual, and you come to something about guided reading groups, hmm, I just can't remember how to do this. There's a QR code, and if you scan it, it will take you right to that video, that short three-to-five-minute video piece, and you can watch it again. So it's really embedded professional development. You don't have to search it out. You can say, oh, yeah, I get this, and move on. Or you can go, yeah, I just need that refresher. Which is one reason the hour and a half, two-hour, one-to-two-hour online course is divided into these shorter videos, so you don't have to go through the whole video to find the piece you want.
And I think this is a really key thing. We earn high marks for our initial training. I mean, there are a few places that are better at training initially than we are, where we fail, and I use that word intentionally, is ongoing training. And so the fact is, when we have a turnover in our system and new people come on, we have not been as intentional as we should be about what is the kind of training that, oh, we just did that training five years ago. Well, if 20% of our elementary staff is new, that means 20% of the people that didn't get the professional development. The thing that I really like about the collaborative classroom piece is that many times when you talk with curriculum companies, they sell you the profession, and they're happy to sell that professional development to you as many times as they can, at a relatively high rate. And I'm not going to say it's poor quality. I actually think a lot of it is pretty good quality. When we were discussing the training schedule, I just think this is a really feather in the cap of this, of this not-for-profit company. We, I had asked, I think we should have the same trainers come back in August for the new teachers that we have for next year that came in June. They didn't want to do that, not because they didn't want to charge us, but because they believe so much in developing local capacity. We had to talk them into saying, please come back this one additional time. They want to get you off of their paid training, so that you can do that locally. To me, that shows a lot of character and where the focus of the company is, because they are focusing about creating a collective of professional, a collective, collective wisdom of professional development within the district, that I think is so important to make something like this sustainable. We, we cannot, this is a substantial investment that this, that the district is making, and we need to make sure that we have the ongoing professional development for people to not just get the initial training, but grow as a reading instructor. We are also finding that students coming from our four-year colleges do not have the same kind of level of skill in teaching and reading that we are hoping for yet. And part of that is a lot of the standards have changed pretty quickly. But I, I just cannot emphasize what Mary is saying, that the professional development is such a key part of it, because that's something we've heard from our teachers over and over again, is that we want that ongoing and sustained professional development. And think of the PLC that has identified a specific strand or a specific area within the reading curriculum that they would like to focus on. And when they were, when they are analyzing their formative assessment data and realize there's some reteaching that they need to do, I can see during PLC time, people pulling up these videos and having these conversations. The video isn't what it's about. It's about sparking the conversation among the professionals. That's where the value is. And so, again, we could go, we're pretty excited about the process, we're pretty excited about the professional development's coming, so I'll be quiet. But pretty soon, I'm going to start gesticulating more than me or them.
And I have two follow-up comments to that. The literacy coaches, the one from each building, are spending every Wednesday afternoon this year examining these materials and going in-depth with them, and planning professional development with the teachers and working with them. So that has also been a gift to have this year, to really put that in place. And then to talk about the sustainability of professional development, as Dr. Hillman said, one of my responsibilities is new teacher workshop. And over the last six years, we've had And over the last six years, we've had, not counting, leaving SubSAC out of it, 180 teachers come through new teacher workshop. Well, essentially, that's almost half our staff. Now, they're not all elementary, but it works out to about that many coming through, because we have about 30 a year. So if you figure 30 times six, so that's a key component of trying to develop something that has some sustainability in the professional development area.
Excellent. Ellen, have a question.
So I really appreciated the narrative and the schedule along with the slides. That was really helpful. My question, so it's really clear from here, sort of what the rollout plan is and the professional development piece. And I'm just curious, from a parent perspective, I'm sure this is going to look different. Like, there was one line in the narrative, the Compañeros teachers will have additional data to determine how it'll fit. So I'm curious as to if you have ideas of how this is going to get communicated to parents, or if there's a similar sort of rollout of this is going to look different next fall, or?
Right. In fact, one of the things the literacy coaches are planning is we will have a table at each elementary school at Ready, Set, Go Day with some of the materials there and have the opportunity for parents to ask any questions, to see some of the materials, and to understand a little bit more about what is happening. And yes, Compañeros teachers and Yale teachers will take Wednesday, June 13th, to meet for the day. And, and I'm meeting with the three lead Compañeros teachers this Thursday to talk about what they need for guided reading in English and Spanish, because obviously, they do half of their literacy in Spanish and half in English. So they're very aware of what's happening and how we can make that work.
Great question. Other questions?
I suppose, excuse me, this is probably a question for Hope about, there's so much focus on the third grade reading. Is the, do you know if the percentage of students who are proficient at grade five is greater?
Greater than?
Than third grade. I mean, are there more proficient in fifth grade?
I can't do that off my head. I would have to really look.
I'm just wondering, because third grade, you know, I look at all of these, all of this data on testing, and then you get a over 90% graduation rate, which it seems like the significant thing, you're graduating the students. Is there, it seems like there should be some sort of, I mean, it seems like there should be more emphasis on fifth grade. You get out of elementary school and you have these skills and you've reached this level of proficiency, third grade. I know there's some, there's some research on the importance of that age, but it seems like.
Well, there's a little saying that you have, you learn to read by third grade and then you read to learn after third grade. So I don't know if that helps answer your question, but like grades K through three are considered like foundational skills. And then from, and comprehension and everything is important too, but you need those foundational skills in order to be able to read to learn as you go through the grades three, four, and through 12. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah.
And we'll get you some data sheets, Rob. I think, I'm not going to, I was going to go to the report card. If I were to summarize my perception of, you will see generally more students who are proficient at grade five than we're, because what our hope is that each year we're, and our plan is that each year we're adding to that level. We focus on making sure, keeping the students who are already proficient proficient and adding to that. And I think if you remember the presentation that Greg Gelinow gave about the work that had happened in sixth grade, we saw some substantial increase at sixth grade as well. I think we're using a variety of pieces to help building that proficiency capacity, because of course, each year, the, the bar to be labeled proficient gets a little bit higher. But the key thing around reading by grade three is that the jury is not out. You know, the jury is back and says that the predictability of students who can read a grade level by the end of grade three is such a huge predictive factor. And it doesn't mean that if a student's not reading proficiently at the end of grade three, that all is, be, be clear, we can make a number, but the predictive power of that shows that is a key benchmark of an area for us to focus, because when you play that out further, those students, you know, do practically very, very well in a lot of other areas. So I think that's a focus that we have looked at, because a lot of researchers on this, you know, in Northfield, have looked at that as a key touch point. It doesn't mean that it's the end of it. That's why we keep reporting each year. Now, I also think if you look at what was, what is being, being proficient with the last set of, the most recent set of standards, and you go back to the previous set of standards, what being proficient in grade three today is substantially different than what it was under the previous set of expectations. And we believe that that goes to what we are hearing from employers about the need for, you know, people who are able to read at a very high level, to be able to really direct some of their own learning as they enter the workforce. So I do believe if we, and we'll get you the data sheets, because we've provided them before, we do see students growth in terms of the percentage of students who are proficient, because we're able to maintain the current students who are proficient, a lot of the time, not always, and then hopefully continue to move additional students in that proficiency category. Mary talked about the Move Five piece. That's, that's one of the initiatives that we have to move five kids who are non-proficient to proficiency by the end of grade three.
Yeah, I guess, just, I think it is coming right after the Prairie Creek, where there's so much emphasis on play in the early grades, and we're sort of packing all of this, we have to get people reading, and there's, it seems like there's a lot of pressure on kids in those early grades and on the teachers in those early grades. If, if third grade is, you know, those are, what are they, eight, eight-year-olds or?
Correct. Eight, nine, eight, nine, third grade.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's.
Right. And I think that's one of the reasons the teachers are really excited about this, because of the authentic literature, that they're reading real books with real stories and real meaning. And I think that's part of learning to read. It's not just the phonetics and foundational skills.
Other questions?
I just had a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation and for, it was great to have the additional context as well, the narrative. So when you were talking, indicating the implementing online, so for the grades one, two, and three and four, are they going into a computer lab, or are they doing it on their iPads?
They're doing it on their iPads.
And so it's not one-on-one in those grades, so somehow that will work?
It's been a little bit of a challenge, but guided reading groups, a teacher will pull every day a group of children over to work with on a specific skill. While meanwhile, the rest of the class has to have something to do. So a lot of them use stations, and part of the stations can be the iPad and the online course, because they should, they should spend 15 to 20 minutes on the online. So that works well during a guided reading group. Now, not all teachers choose to do it that way. They have flexibility in when they implement it.
Okay.
And some, some teachers, like on first, in the first grade, if there are four sections, two sections will do it at a time, and they'll borrow their neighbor's iPads so they can have a full class. So there are creative ways to schedule that.
Oh, sure.
And each grade level can choose how they would like to do it.
Okay, good. And then looking at the timeline, so it appears that the elementary teachers were, were really given a lot of information in August, and going forward now, they'll get, they'll get more and more. But after that August meeting, what was the sense from the collective group who maybe hadn't, you know, other than the literacy team that had?
Right.
Solely focused on this? What were some of the reactions following that meeting?
Actually, I've, I've only heard some very positive things. They're very excited about getting the new materials. And then, you know, then it kind of faded away with the, just getting underway in the school year. And then, of course, in December, right before winter break, all of the materials arrived in their classroom, which really sparked some interest. And I had to do something that I don't like to do. I had to remind the teachers, please don't implement this, you know, because you want the teachers excited. And there were several grade levels that were like, oh, wow, after Christmas break, we're going to start reading. And I said, no, wait, you know, slow down just a little bit. We haven't had the training. You know, please read through the materials. If you come across a lesson or a book that you want to use, by all means. But we're, until we have some training from the company and know how to implement it with fidelity, we don't want to go full bore and develop bad habits or say, oh, this doesn't work. Well, we don't know that. But that, you know, that's hard for me to do, is to say, no, 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 don't, you know, because they were so excited about the materials and so excited to get into them, so.
That's good. Let's see, I think?
If I can make one final comment.
Yes.
I think that what I was really pleased with is, you know, we have been concerned about the performance, the trend of our reading performance for the past several years. And, you know, we've got, as we develop any kind of process, like this is the district, we had some folks who were saying we were going far too slow, that they were ready to implement something, you know, yesterday. We have other people who just needed more time and actually were concerned that our timeframe was too fast. But I think what Mary did was very intelligent in terms of bringing in a very representative group of teachers from across the elementary schools, the support we got from Laura Turek and Fritz Bogot with Northfield Promise in terms of making sure that there was some collaboration beyond our walls, I think was really important, because it goes to show that literacy is not just a school district responsibility. Of course, we hold the bulk of the responsibility, but there are other pieces and other partners that are willing to help us. For example, Northfield Rotary and the Rotary Readers Program. There's a number of groups like that that are trying to help us. But the process, I think, is one of the best that I have seen in terms of having a tremendous amount of teacher voice in the process, a great consensus-building activity in which I do feel when people left that, I had a chance to sit in on the beginning of a number of those meetings. I really do that we feel that we have our professionals' voice at the basis of this decision. And I think that that bodes really well for providing that fidelity in tier one, which in the core curriculum, that frankly, we have not had ever. And so this is very exciting in terms of moving forward, and we're really pleased. We hope that we will see the results sooner rather than later. So thank you, Mary, for your work.
Thank you.
Mary, I just had one quick question that I realized as I looked. I just had one question about the Fidelity Grant. Do we have one more year of that?
Well, that's, that's been an interesting process. We had thought last year it would only be one year, and they told us no. And then when we went to, Becky Gani and I attended the meeting in June, and Vicky Weinberg from the State Department said, it's probably going, probably going to be funded for five years. And they are going to provide the support, like, for our June 11th and 12th days of training. I put in the budget for some money for lunch, so we can have working lunches, and they approved that. So they have been, is very supportive of our tier one implementation.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your work on, on getting that additional funding. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we have one more item for discussion, and that, our Director of Finance, Val Merzor, is going to talk about the potential change in salary coding on two positions. So, Val?
Thank you. So one of the, our, in December, actually, our capital committee met, and we actually meet pretty early and plan for the next fiscal year, so we were looking at items for the 18, 19 school year. And this year, we had about $1.2 million worth of requests. And when I project the budget, it looks like we have about $400,000 available for, to allocate to the projects. And the group meets, and everybody kind of says their piece about what they think are the priorities, and the group comes to consensus on the items that will get, get approved for the next fiscal year. And this is obviously a pretty significant gap in the funding. And one of the ideas that we discussed was the potential of moving the two network administrator positions that are currently funded with capital out of the capital budget and back into the general fund. We moved the assistant network administrator into the capital as a part of the offset when we implemented the behavior coaches to make sure that we were maintaining the general fund. And so the opportunity arose with the increase in the operating referendum. We'll obviously have a little less pressure on the general fund next year. And so I wanted to bring that back to you, because this obviously was a change that we did as part of the general fund budget. So in the interest of transparency, we just wanted to bring it back for your consideration. It is, you know, we could do it for one year and reassess and choose to do it for more years or move them back. It's not something that's, you know, locked up. We can move them back and forth as, as needed with the general fund budget and the way that that's being projected. So certainly not for vote tonight, just for your information and if you have any questions, I would certainly welcome them.
Okay, excellent. Questions, comments about the proposal to move those positions? I just really appreciate you coming to us with this. And I think one thing that, you know, we are always, you know, obviously in the interest of fiscal stewardship, but also really some exemplary approaches to how you kind of manage the budget. And I think that the $200,000 of additional funds will, obviously, not enough by getting closer to really addressing a number of needs. I'm sure that that list has really true needs and not a lot of just, you know, wants out there. They're very, very true needs. So if the board has any other, is there any questions or comments regarding this change? We would then bring it forward as an item for individual action at our January 22nd board meeting. But again, appreciate you bringing it forward and thinking of all ways to really be able to, you know, really utilize the dollars we have in the best, the best way.
And I think just in the interest of clarification, the work that that capital committee does does come before you, usually in March is when it comes before you. And remember that the 10-year plan from our Buildings and Grounds Department is one of the basis for that. So again, this is, as you mentioned, this is not something that, when you, when you hear requests, I think you think that people generate a list of things that they think they might need. There are things from time to time that jump into that list year to year that weren't there before. But in general, that 10-year list is a piece that we're required to continue, to complete for the state every summer for the long-term facilities maintenance. Some of those projects are, are paid for with long-term facilities maintenance funds. There are others that are not eligible for that, where we look at the capital funding. And then, of course, the technology plan and curriculum plan also influence how that committee makes its recommendation. So I just want to be clear, it's not something that, you know, people just bring, this is what we think we'd like this year. It is based upon a multi-year plan.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so if there's no further questions, then we will just bring this forward as an item for individual action in our January 22nd board meeting. So that concludes items for discussion and report. We only have one item for individual action this evening. It's an additional, addition of a .2 FTE for High School English Language Learner, Learning Teacher. Mary, do you want to just give us a really brief overview, and then we'll ask for a motion prior to questions or comments?
Sure. Thank you. I'm back again. We have some students that are English learners, and they're also classified as students who have had interrupted formal education, otherwise known as SLIF. They've been in regular math classes. So they are either new to the country this year or last year, and have had interrupted education. They've been in regular math classes. At the end of last year, for, for this coming school year, we've added an ADSS math class for the first time, alternative delivery of specialized instruction. And those students were placed in there. So we realized that there was a need at the high school, added it to our ADSS application for this year and next year, the two-year applications. And, and as these students were moving through both a regular algebra class and this ADSS math class, we were able to determine that they were not functioning where they needed to be, that their skills were not where they needed to be. And through some creative work with Joel and a professor from St. Olaf, and our English Language Teachers at the high school, it was determined that offering a math class for them at their level would be the best. And one of our English Language Teachers, Lisa Kruger-Rab, has an elementary teaching license, so, as well as an English learner license. So she would be qualified and able to teach that math class. So as we've been able to pinpoint the skill level of these students and figure out that we really were not meeting their needs in a regular class, and ADSS was not providing enough support to get them to the level they needed to be, we feel that this is a good addition for, for their education.
Okay, excellent. So it is an item for individual action, so is there a motion to approve an additional .2 FTE for a high school English Language Learner Teacher at the cost of $9,646?
So moved.
Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by? Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Noel. Okay, questions, comments, either?
I just want to make one clarification here. That this is a piece where, when this need was identified, good people were trying to do good things and the course got started before some of the information came to the district office. No one's fault, no, no poor intentions. We like to be transparent with you. When you've set how much FTE we have for the year, we come in with that, within that, one way or the other. So when we do, the estimate does include paying Lisa back into December. There was a problem identified, good intention, people got after it. But I just want to be clear with you that, you know, this is a piece where in this case we are, normally we don't do this, but it was a set of unique circumstances where we're asking you to prove, approve some of this in arrears. And we normally don't like to do this, but again, a convergence of things took place, which is good. We don't see, unlike a lot of districts, we have had over the years, very few English language learners who are also another grade at education acronym SLIF, you know, where there is the interrupted formal education. We've started to see this a little bit more in the last couple of years. And we're really thankful that we were able to, again, new to country, all of these students new to country in the last couple of years. And so we're, we're pleased that we could identify and provide these students the specialized instruction. If they don't get it now, the chances of them getting it further down the line are just not going to be there.
Well, and we don't assume that new to country means that they have not had education. You know, we assume that they probably have had some math instruction, which is why the category of SLIF came about. That some, some students have been in refugee camps and had other life circumstances where their education has been interrupted.
Amy?
So what grades are the students in and are we expecting this to be continued past this year?
They're in ninth and 10th grade. And actually, I did visit the class last week and they are making amazing strides when things are now, well, first of all, they're in a very small group and they are just, their eyes light up. They're going, oh, wow, I didn't know this. So it was, it was just delightful to be in their class and watch them work together and do problem solving. We won't know. We are doing a lot of progress monitoring to see how far they will advance. It would be nice if they could get ready for algebra by next year. And that, that's our goal. This is new to us. So we'll have to see where we can get.
And we'd be able to take that into consideration in the planning process for next year's part of overall FTE plan.
Right. We would know this spring.
Good question. Other questions? Comments?
I agree, SLIF. So is there a formal definition for that? And then, is, is my question, because I was thinking, you know, had we seen that before and, and do we know what some of the, kind of the percent increases that, you know, people are seeing statewide, you know, districts are seeing statewide? And then is there some sort of, dare say, state funding to address? Or some conversation around state funding?
Sorry, I shouldn't be laughing, yes.
No, I could imagine this is, this is an area where we will continue to see, you know, those, the kind of, you know, we, we see it now, but what kind of growth, you know, would we anticipate, which, you know, you can anticipate, but what are some of the, maybe some other districts seeing? And then would there be some sort of enough of a, you know, consensus with districts statewide to maybe have conversations with legislators around, you know, we're fortunate in that we're able to, to fund this. And this is absolutely the right thing to do. And I'm, I'm really thrilled that we were able to have a teacher who, you know, .2 FTE is not something we could just necessarily find someone to be able to do. So the fact that we had someone in the position to take it, I, it's, you know, a great, fortunate thing that we're able to address the obvious need that these students have. And I appreciate the, you know, ability to, to react to it very quickly. But I'm wondering, would there be any sort of hazard in discussion around addressing this type of costs and having, you know, that sort of funding follow this, this type of need?
It is a relatively new definition from the State Department.
Okay.
And it is tracked in MARS. So we are starting to track it in MARS, which means there might be some hope for funding. They're tracking it. But that's, Val smiles.
We also track ELL. We know that one.
Right.
But I think, I mean, I think it's just a really good, you know, opportunity for us to see as a board that there's this category of students who come with, you know, a high level of need in certain areas and that we are fortunate, again, that we can, we have the flexibility. But, you know, there's many districts we know that that wouldn't end or, you know, have sort of the teed it up so that we understand what some of the other costs are and conversations with legislators around, you know, the funding needs that are emerging as, as the world changes.
I just think if you imagine, you know, some of these students that we are seeing, particularly students in this math classroom who not only, you know, needed to leave their homes, in a, in a part halfway across the world. They spent a substantial, in some cases, sub-students spent substantial time in a refugee camp. They get to a place that's far different from where they lived and now we're asking them to do algebra. Probably the least of their issues, right, for a long time. And I'm, but this is important. This is, this is part of helping students achieve the American dream, is some of these basic academic skills. And I'm really pleased that the teachers picked this out and saw the issue, made the recommendation and moving forward. We will watch it, you know, in terms of, there's no money this legislative session. We, we know that there's going to be so, one of our goals is to make sure there aren't additional requirements or regulations put on us that don't include some kind of funding. And in fact, in February, at the Southeast Minnesota Legislative Breakfast, Todd Sesker and I will be presenting on the special education cross subsidy and the issue that we have in terms of another idea, in terms of mental health funding. That's before we even talk about the substantial cross subsidy that we have for English language learners and now this particular new area we're tracking as well. And when your education is interrupted, imagine that you have a child who can't go to school for a full year. That's a pretty substantial deal, you know. And so we'll certainly be looking at this. It was a good wake-up call for us to make sure we're providing students with the specific instruction that they need. And we'll just continue to look for it and we'll continue to advocate. We'll take it on the basic formula and go from there. But.
One little anecdote. One of the students had been having a lot of issues with attendance. And you can see why if, if they were spending two hours of their day in not only a foreign language, but in concepts well beyond what they were doing. And the attendance has, at least at this point, has substantially improved over the last month and a half because they're, they're able to see some success in math.
Excellent. Great, great. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the additional .2 FTE at a cost of $9,646. Again, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. Is there anything, anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Alan. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item for information, the enrollment report. Just a reminder, it was in our table file. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so cruising altitude time of the year, that you'll see that we are roughly right around the 4, dipped a little bit below 4,000 in terms of this one, but right about where we were last month. And January is also a month that from time to time we'll see an influx of students at semester time. So some changes there. But again, relatively stable.
Okay, any questions or comments? No?
Dr. Hillman, I see that there's a 42% increase in early childhood. The numbers in September 5th, 71, and now they're 101. What is our capacity for early childhood? Maybe a tough question for you, but.
Well, our capacity is gone, is it not?
It's, it's gone, but we're still.
We're above our capacity, so to speak.
Yes. I mean, we have, yes, we have, we are, we have a, when we started the school year, Hand in Hand Preschool was full. And so those are classrooms that are integrated classrooms. So they are slot, there are both slots for general education students and special education students. So students that are still coming in could potentially be either in the birth to three area. And so they're not actually enrolled in Hand in Hand, but they are, have been identified as special, as special education students who are receiving services in their home or in another location. Or they could be coming in to self-contained rooms in Hand in Hand. Thus, they're not coming into our integrated classrooms, but they're coming into one of those classrooms. They, this number often goes up during the school year because of things like early childhood screening that take place during the school year. So if more children get identified and evaluated throughout the school year, which is why you see that increase in number through the year.
And this is a piece, it's the same story we've been telling you for the last couple of years. We're seeing more and more students identified at an earlier age, which is great because we can, when we can intervene early, we can help identify the needs and help provide that specialized instruction where they may not need to continue in special education throughout their career. But the fact is, we're just, we're seeing more students with those needs at an earlier age. And it's fair to say we are out of space. I mean, we moved some people out, some administrative staff out of Longfellow, the high school helped us find a location for them here so we could free up some additional room. And we are currently brainstorming, how do we do that again next year? We've got some ideas that we think are going to be win-win for right now, but it is, we have some issues with early childhood space.
My message to the community is if we cut the corners on early childhood, we're going to increase a significant expenditures in the next few years.
We could not agree with you more, Noel.
Excellent. Well, sorry, Noel. Any other questions or comments on the moment report? Future meetings, a regular school board meeting, Monday, January 22nd, 2018. There will be a closed session for negotiation strategy following this meeting. And then again, on Monday, February 12th at 7:00 PM, another regular school board meeting. Just wanted to thank Erin Bailey for stepping in for Danita Delzer and the retired Danita Delzer. So we had, do have a vacancy in that area. So Erin, thank you for stepping in and doing the minutes. And Dr. Hillman, wonderful job preparing the packets. Good work.
Apparently I missed one data sheet, so we'll, we'll check how that happened.
Hey, it was all good. It's all good. So anyway, so with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of adjournings say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.